Today, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. I have the call to order invocation by Jeff Darby, pledge of allegiance by Mr. Jeff Free. Please stand.
Holy Father, we are thankful for this day. We're thankful for the rest on last night. We're thankful, Lord God, for your greatness and for your goodness. We pray, oh Father, for those who are in crisis, those who have problems that only you can solve. We ask you, Lord God, to have mercy. Father, we pray for those who are here today. We pray for their families. We pray for their loved ones, near and distant. Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the things that we are about to do today in this meeting. Thank you, Father God, for your guidance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Boja City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The chair entertains a motion to approve minutes of August second, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
I'll move.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any comment from the public on this item? Thank you. Cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Counsel, we have a few things today on the agenda. One would be to remove item number one on unfinished business from the agenda. That one's gonna need to have some more work done on it before it's ready.
I'll make that motion to remove item number one on the unfinished business from the agenda.
Second. We have a motion to delete item number one by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Hammond. Do we have any comments from the public? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I'll make, can I go ahead? Make the motion to add Shawn Toops with Governmental Consultants and Kent Scheck Snyder with the Cisson Group under ceremonial items and recognition of guests.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Hammond. Any comment from anyone? Counsel, please cast your vote. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So I'll move.
Second.
Comment from the public? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did you vote?
Well, I don't know. Let's see here. There we go.
Motion carries. Ceremonial matters and recognition of guest.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
It's good to be here. Wanted to come and give you an update on some potential refinancing.
You'd be so kind to give your name.
Yes, Shawn Toops with Government Consultants and I've got Kent Scheck Snyder with Cisson Securities and Charlie Sides with Stevo Nichols.
Thank you.
So we actually were in the process of reaching out to some, had left a message actually with a couple of council folks and got an email from Phyllis saying Mr. Darby had asked that we come to the meeting. So it worked out perfect because we wanted to come anyway. But wanted to update you a little bit. You may recall, I'll take you back a little bit, about a year ago, we presented to you the opportunity to refinance some of your bonds. I think it was four issues, your fourteens, a couple of fifteens, and the fifteen eight. There was some significant savings there. Rates were real good, and part of the reason we do it is to get through the approval process because it takes time, as we always mention. By the time we got through the bond commission process and we came back and gave you an update in December, rates had moved against us significantly. So the savings weren't there. So we said, look, what we're gonna do is we'll get those approvals in place, which we did, and we'll continue to watch it and monitor it. Of course, early part of the year, it got even worse. Rates went even higher. The Fed has continued to raise interest rates. However, what we've seen in the last month and really in the last few weeks since the last Fed meeting is we've seen the long end of the curve come down. So we've really seen rates drop. So we think there's an opportunity again to get back to, maybe not to the level of savings we had last year, but to get back to some pretty significant savings, just as a kind of a, I guess, a measure. The Bond Commission has some certain levels they like to see. They generally with a refunding like this like to see a three percent present value savings. We think today we're probably around four percent, which is pretty good. We've got some indications from some banks, what we're in the process of doing now, and why we wanted to update you is we're going back to those banks and saying, look, I don't want an indication. I want a firm rate from you. So they've got to do their underwriting of Boja. It doesn't cost you anything to do that. But we're hoping in the not-too-distant future, they'll come back to us with some rates where we can look at it and see what the savings are, and maybe as early as next month be back to you with, hey, here's some real savings. You guys want to move forward and take advantage of it. We'll keep the administration and finance updated as to how those things proceed so we can, so we can be back to you. I did want to note important in talking to some of you before, that when we talk about refinancing, it's not like refinancing your home where if you've got twenty years left and you refinance for thirty years. We're refinancing term-to-term, which means we're not extending your debt. We're simply lowering the payment. So the savings we talk about is true savings. It's not, you know, not because we're extending the debt and lowering the payment. We're leaving the debt the same. But again, we're glad that rates have finally started to come back down a little bit. You know, wish we could say we're certain they're gonna stay there. They could move the other way against us again, and if they do, we'll be back to you saying, hey, we're still monitoring and we're watching, but we're hoping in the next month or so, we'll get some good, some good rates back from some banks and so can create some savings for the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you guys have anything to add.
Anyone? Well, we appreciate your travel to Boja City and to be in this meeting to give us that insight. So we look forward to seeing you next time.
We needed to come up and get some heat, so we.
Plenty of that over.
Yeah.
Big sum with you.
We'll do what we can. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Bids. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number twenty-two dash six-five-five, demolition of twenty-six forty-three Trishell Street, Boja City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mel Chandler. Today, we're opening bids for the demolition of dilapidated structure at twenty-six forty-three Trishell Street. We have one bid today from Three Gen Construction. This was approved at the Administrative Council on July twelfth. So it has been, it has gone through Administrative Council already.
You may have had the homeowner was there. She was all for it. I think that's the one that she herself was even in the backyard in a tent. Anyway, she has no problems with it.
So the bid from Three Gen is twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and no change. They do have their bid bond. That amount is twenty-four, four-five-zero, point zero zero. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Somebody.
For this bid.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the reading of the bid. Any discussion? Public input? Counsel, please cast your vote. Unfinished business?
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to transfer thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars from the police department budget to the public affairs department budget in the twenty-twenty-two general fund budget. Final reading.
Move.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Hammond. Counsel, discussion or debate? The floor is open for public comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to declare the completion of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Pump Station Project by Max Foot Construction LLC at a total project cost of three million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, including deductive change order number one in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars and to amend ordinance thirty-nine of twenty-twenty-one, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement Fund four-fifteen Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund. Final reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery and second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, counsel? The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Introduce an ordinance to transfer twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars from the police department to the legal department in the twenty-twenty-two general fund budget to fund a part-time police liaison to the city attorney. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Free and a second by Mr. Montgomery. Discussion or debate?
Mr. President, if I might add, ask a quick question of the city attorney on the, so the twenty-one thousand and change, what line item in the budget of the police department budget is it coming from? I know it's not coming from salaries, but what part of their...
I'll let finance. I've discussed it with her.
Okay.
She can probably give you a better answer.
Okay, the transfer actually is from salaries, from police salaries to legal salaries and benefits.
All right, so we're gonna take twenty-one thousand from
From police.
budgeted police salaries.
Yes.
It would still leave the police department with a surplus for this year.
And so, so that'll be able to properly fund every officer that's currently employed and should, let's say this, I think the police department last I saw was twenty employees down. Let's say they had a gigantic recruiting event and next month hired twenty police officers. Could we fund all of that?
Yes, sir.
So, you mind if I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we're taking it from salaries, everything's funded now, so do we have an excess in salaries? Because we sure don't want to defund like across the river, you know, because you'll never get them back.
Yes, sir. They weren't, haven't been fully staffed the full year, so they have excess that can be transferred.
So somebody worked half a year and left, and is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, they have their, haven't fully utilized all their budgeted positions for the full year. So there were some budgeted salaries that didn't get paid because those positions weren't filled, and it kind of created an excess.
And this is one-time money?
Yeah, one-time transfer.
Yes.
Yes.
One-time.
One-time.
Fine item amount, so at the end of the day, it's not recurring, so we're not gonna have to worry about it affecting the
Is there not a
Future, excuse me, y'all go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Montgomery.
The, you know, going forward, it's not gonna have an effect. We've been through this before, back ten, twelve years ago, where we went down this road, but in other words, in that position, it continued, and then you were in the deficit spending. And to your point, it started affecting the actual force
Right.
of policemen and fire and so forth. So this is a one-time expense against a one-time savings of being down how many officers for that period of time? So anyway.
When, does the, since the liaison is gonna actually work for the city attorney and report to the city attorney, does the legal department not have it in their budget to absorb this cost?
Not for twenty-twenty-two.
Not for, okay, but you're gonna budget it for twenty-twenty-three?
That's up to the council. I mean, if we come back and if the council wants to approve it, if the mayor's on board with it, if we feel that we still need the liaison for twenty-twenty-three, then it would have to be approved by the council. But there's nothing for twenty-twenty-three in this twenty-one thousand. This simply takes us to December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-two.
So this won't really be passed until, golly, end of September, Phyllis?
It will be a second reading plus, and I'll let Ms. McGraw.
Ten days?
In.
It's going to be, the second reading will be on August thirtieth, and it will advertise, let's see here. It's gonna advertise the, I'm in the wrong month. It will advertise on August, I mean, on September the seventh, and will become, they can enact on it on September sixteenth.
So that's three and a half months.
Correct.
That's all I got. It's okay.
I've got one question, Mr. President. So in this twenty-one thousand, sorry, let me get back up to it. Twenty-one thousand, I don't know, twenty-three, there's no, no benefits, anything like that included in this twenty-one thousand?
Not at all.
And the employment application, all the, once he's hired, all that will be administered?
If the council approves it.
Any additional discussion? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
The floor is open for comments of the public. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars from the general fund fund balance to enter into a contract with CG Six Technology Consulting for a complete assessment of the capability and vulnerability of information services and systems of the city of Boja City and authorized city attorney Charles Jacobs to sign any and all documents necessary for this contract. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Williams. Discussion, debate?
Is, yeah, Mr. President, is this just for them to come in and check our system, all of the, everywhere we go, all over the city, to see if we have any vulnerable points? Is that what?
This is a guy, David, you want to explain it to him?
Is that what this?
Um, I would liking it to a financial audit. All right, so we hire CPAs to come in and do an independent audit to make sure that all of our accounting and our systems and all, and our numbers are good, and we don't have any internal control weaknesses. I mean, so the same is true for IT now, especially, and I call this a large corporation, the city, which it is, eight hundred employees, in multiple facets. So he comes in and checks, to your point, vulnerability. That's just one, though. But he looks for internal controls, how we're operating, things that we might could do better. We hired him, I don't
Couple of years ago.
Two or three years ago, and it was incredible. If we had pictures to show you what our IT looked like before and after, you wouldn't believe it. But, and we just felt it was time, just to make sure, especially given the threats
Yeah.
that exist out there, and, and just make sure that, you know, we've gotten everything buttoned down, and he gives us a clean opinion.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, what, what's the timeline on the contract? Do you remember?
I would say he probably will be here ninety days, one hundred and twenty days. I don't
He needs works off-site. He can access from his home.
Is that right, Phyllis?
Yes, sir. And if anything else, he'll come back to the council. If he feels like there's something that needs to be done, he'll come back to the council and say, you know, this is what's going on and this is extra.
And if we, yes, if we, if he does find a vulnerable point or weakness, he will come back and let the council know, Charles, that I need to investigate this further so we can ensure that we got this buttoned down, whatever, if that.
Brian, and I talked to Chris yesterday about it, Brian, and I'll be honest with you, I was against it last time. David had said it, okay? But after about two weeks in, it's like you jump on board. Does that dude, on-site, off-site, we wasn't prepared, you know, and he got us up to snuff.
One question, if he finds something that we're very vulnerable and it's, does he bring everything to public knowledge, or is some things that would be brought that, hey?
No, well, no.
I mean, is that a legal question? Yeah, I mean, everything wouldn't be
No, I mean, that's proprietary.
Well, but he said that they would come back before the council, so I would just
I just mean for money.
Oh, okay, okay.
I meant money. If we need additional funds for additional services, but no, it would be generic
Okay.
in nature as far as the request.
And if he finds any He meets with you every couple of weeks and tells you what's going on, what he's done, what he still needs to do, very open about it.
And if he finds any serious deficiencies, problems, threats, that would be something that would be discussed with the council as a whole in executive session.
Okay, that's, yeah, that, I guess I should have asked it in that, those layman terms. Thank you.
Scope of work is six weeks. It's a six-week scope of work. His timeline, you guys asked what the timeline was.
They said a hundred.
Didn't it say up to six weeks, I think?
I think, I think
Six weeks, a hundred and twenty hours.
Hundred and twenty days, something like that.
A hundred and twenty hours, six weeks.
Hundred and twenty hours.
But again, some of that is off-site, up Correct. from his home, and he can access, get into our systems too. Correct.
I, I would figure, though, that it's gonna take at least four months. You know, it isn't like he's just gonna hit it eight hours a day. I mean, it, you know, so I figure over a period of three months.
Last time, Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Williams may recall, I don't think I was in favor as much as Mr. Williams said, but I was sold because he, he did bring us up to speed on a often basis. So I hope he does the same thing. Hope he comes before the council and provide information like he did before.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that, that's going to be my expectation, and I think that would help with other council member who has not experienced his forensic approach to things. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Comments from anyone? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve change orders number one, number two, and number three for the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Phase Two project with JB James Construction LLC, reducing the total project cost by nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, I believe, and a second by Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
Okay. End of discussion? The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve change order number four for the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Phase Two project with JB James Construction LLC in the amount of one million, four hundred, three thousand, four hundred, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents for the addition of street lighting using the twenty-eighteen LCDA bond fund. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Williams. Discussion, debate, counsel?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. And this is an astronomical amount for a change order, one point four million dollars. Was street, did we not know what needed street lighting when this originally went out for bid?
Street lighting.
Most roads and everything you build, I mean, it's gotta have lights.
You asking me the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when the project was passed over to us, there was not street lighting included in the plans that were nearly complete. So we worked with the city to commission a design to continue the lighting, similar to what we did on phase one throughout this project. There is lighting on this project. The bridge has lighting, but the, you know, the either end of the bridge does not include lighting. So we're bringing this measure before the council. We, we feel lighting is appropriate, and we're putting that in your hands to make, make the decision.
So when, when you said, you guys, you're talking about when y'all, y'all took over as the project manager of, of the deal, right?
Yes, sir.
Because they don't know that.
Correct.
And that's, that's what they need to know, that you took over that role, Man Shack.
There wasn't lighting included in the, in the, in the design. And there was debate as to whether or not do we incorporate that into the project? Do we bid it separately? How do you want to handle it? And we feel as though this is a reasonable approach to putting lighting out there on the carriageway. Costs are going up. It's not gonna get any cheaper. You know, we've got a similar lighting project going down Seventy-One South for one point two million. So
Oh, go ahead.
I wanted to tell you, too, down the road, there was another exclusion from the design plans. Were no sound barriers. So at this point, we're looking to have design changes on the overpass and then the cost associated with installing the sound panels, you know, on the side. So to answer your question, there were several things that in the design
That were left out.
Correct.
One, one other question, Ben, for you. Is this, is this an estimate by JB James, or is this an estimate by y'all? Is this gonna go, are they gonna send this out for bid, JB James?
This is a hard number from JB James, and if approved by the council, will be incorporated into their contract. So their subcontractor will be performing that work. That subcontractor's performed quite a bit of street lighting in Boja City. They're very capable. We feel like it's a good plan, and now's the time. And, and doing it through JB James, you don't get a lot of he said, she said, coordination problems and things like that. So it's, it's our opinion that this is the, the most advantageous path forward for lighting that for the city. We've worked with the city administration and city attorney on that. Feel like we have a good measure. And it's a surprise, I get it, but we feel like it's something that needs to, to be incorporated into the project.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Of course, I'm not blaming Man Shack or any, I understand the circumstances that got us here. My concern is now, just within the last sixty days, this project, we've incurred almost five million, a little over four million in additional fees, expenses that we, that weren't originally budgeted for. Mr. Montgomery is saying that there's more that's gonna be coming in the future, and so to me, it just seems like this project is And so to me, it just seems like this project is going to end up being very over budget. Is that, is that accurate? Or how would you characterize where we're gonna be when it's all said and done, as far as?
I'm not sure that I follow. What five million are you referencing?
Well, we, we, we just had a, a ordinance a couple of weeks ago where we settled a property acquisition.
Property acquisition?
Um, so that was three million. This is one point four. And then, of course, we're gonna have some additional costs. So that's, that's my concern, is that this is gonna end up being way over budget than what we had originally planned.
Well, as far as the construction, Councilman Smith, it's on track. You know, this is in addition to that contract of one point four million. And it's y'all's pleasure to award it or not.
And y'all considered making this a separate project and-
We did.
But you, but you feel like this is the cheapest way to go?
I do.
And I think to answer your, your concern, and I think Mr. Easterly's here as well, that in these size and magnitude of con, this contract, you know, the, you come out with a budgeted number, and I can't remember the right of way, was it six million that we budgeted? Maybe Angela knows, but I, this should use that number. Well, I mean, you get to the point where you gotta do the project. DOTD says this is how it's gonna be, so you, you have to settle it. And, and sometimes there's no way to anticipate.
I, I agree, I agree. I was just making it-
These additional costs. But I think that we're, and, and tell me if I'm speaking, you know, out of turn, but it, it, it appears to me that we've identified those significant material numbers as far as future change orders, and that's why I was bringing up the sound barriers, because that came up. You don't want to build something like that. I mean, our office sits there, you know, within a hundred feet or so. So, I mean, these are things that you have to do that, you know, they were not included. And, and you, I don't know how you go back and say why. I guess going forward, maybe you have ideas how we can eliminate this-
Right.
-in the future. But we have to go forward and complete this project, and these are unforeseen costs that have manifested themselves. But I think, and your question was, do we know the end?
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fair.
And I, I think if, I mean, barring some-
Yeah.
-catastrophic event, we know that we've got the additional stormwater pump station that we have to do, the DOTD put on us, the sound, the lighting. We're through with the right of way, am I correct?
We are.
And we-
Finished with property acquisition.
Okay. We're finished, but we're actually gonna sell the oil change company or put it out potentially as surplus and take bids. So let's just say we get a million back from that.
Right.
You know, that, that's money that comes back to us to help offset some of these costs. But I think to Councilman Smith's concern, would, is that a fair assessment? That we have identified what we see as significant additional costs-
Yes, sir.
At this point?
We are-
In the project?
In our office with our crystal ball, trying to find every little thing that, that we, we believes there. Part of the, the difficulty with, with us, particularly as it relates to the funding of the project, is that this project dates back to like two thousand and one.
Right.
And so we've been working with finance to understand better how to reconcile those accounts. We, in the engineering department, have a real clear understanding of the infrastructure costs, construction costs, you know, the various construction administration services and things like that, and keep up with those by the penny.
Mm-hmm.
But there are other costs, land acquisition right of way, legal fees, things like that, that, that happen. And, and we, we haven't, it's not, it's, it's not the fault of anybody, but we're looking to make sure that we understand soup to nuts what those costs are. We're working with finance on a measure to come back to the council with a clear, one-ask plan to make sure that we cover all of those project costs that, that are above and beyond pure construction. You know, we have Citizens Bank Drive that'll be required. There's costs associated with that. Lighting, you know, this is a, a, you know, a big cost. But we, we think, you know, on the flip side, part of the energy invested in getting this project to market has probably saved you untold millions in getting this project constructed when we did, getting it out on the street, things like that. I'm seeing numbers right now that are like astronomical. We're not talking double, triple, quadruple. What we could put pipe in the ground for less than a year ago, you can't buy the pipe for. You know, so all of that, when you look at it, yeah, it's a big number. But I think Bossier's done a great job at trying to get projects to market, get good competition on those, and give the community a lot of value for the money that's being spent. So it's a lot of money. I understand that it's a big ask, and that's why we're putting it into y'all's hands to make that decision. We think it's the right path forward.
Ben, I got, I got one other question for you, and I mean, you, you may be able to answer this. The quantity of lights, I see it's a hundred and two light poles.
A bunch of them, yeah.
Um, is that, was that number set forth by DOTD?
No.
That's just what we came up with?
That is, we had a design. We had an electrical engineer put together a set of plans, and they use their industry standards for ensuring that there's appropriate spacing for lighting and things like that. So much like what you see on phase one, if you've been through there at night, it looks really good.
Yeah.
It'll have that same look and feel. So from traffic street all the way to Benton Road and the signals that'll be on Benton Road, it'll have that same flavor going through there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
One, one thing, Mike, would help if we knew the approximate fund balance in this account. That, that would probably cushion the blow a little bit. Is there, is there a number, a soft, hard number that, that you have, or you can get back and let us know?
I can.
Do you have it? Okay.
Ben, what account was it?
There's two accounts, and I'm, don't get me lying to you.
Oh, come on, lie to me. I think it was one of the, the two thousand and ten, wasn't it? I got, I got all the bond.
Okay.
All in, Mr. Darby. I think we're, we talked about this. I'm talking about phase one and phase two, sixty-three.
Yes, sir, sixty-three million.
And some change.
That's not the balance, but that's what's in there-
Mm-hmm.
-uh, currently for that, to get these projects completed.
I was giving him a total cost, and you can look at what the work in progress is on the job and subtract. And I think that gets to the, what he's looking for is the-
And, sorry, Councilman, the, this measure is using the two thousand and eighteen LCDA bond specifically.
Okay.
So our intent is not to use the, the funding that's currently within the Carriageway account, but to use that two thousand and eighteen LCDA bond specifically for this lighting project, we'll call it.
That's what I was gonna finish with.
Sorry.
We needed additional money, so we, we have this two thousand and eighteen LCD bond. It was, I think it was twenty million, if I'm not mistaken, that's out there that we're utilizing to subsidize the Carriageway to complete the project.
Okay.
And going forward, whenever we get the price on the sound barriers and so forth, I would suggest that we take the money out of the LCDA. So you'll need to add that, I think, to what your question is, Mr. Darby.
Okay, I got the, it, it was a two thousand and eighteen LCDA bond with sixty million. Uh, remaining balance is till fifty-five million.
Okay. All right, so-
Well, remaining to be spent, twenty-nine million.
So the money's there, so-
Yeah.
That's important to know. Okay.
And how much, uh, when can we expect the rest of these big-ticket items that are gonna be coming to be calculated? And money appropriated?
Uh, soon. We're, we're working right now. We have finally gotten permits. Matter of fact, the administration handed me. We've been working with the core and the levy board on permits for Citizens Bank Drive. Part of the issue there is that the drive's gonna have a little depression and go underneath the overpass, and it's abutting the levy. So we needed a permit for that. And then we have a stormwater pump station that'll be going in to take all the drainage around there. That pump station will pump over the levy. Both of those measures required levy and core approval. We got those like Wednesday, last week, working through the formalities. So we will be bringing those projects to the council. Wanna tie a bow around everything at that time so that we know we've got, you know, flush accounts to take care of everything. So that's our intent, to do it. Uh, we're working now, but like, I'm not an accountant like this gentleman is. When you start looking at twenty years of, of ordinances and figures, it's difficult. And, you know, even with the finance department, we're, we're, we wanna make sure that when we come to the council, it's crystal clear. That's our objective.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And the floor is open for comments of the public. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve change order number three for the East Bank Fire Station project with an increase of a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars and fifty cents for a total contract price of three million, twenty thousand, seven hundred, fifty-seven dollars and six cents. First reading.
Some move.
Second. Have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, and a second, Mr. Free. Discussion, counsel? Of course. Yes, sir.
No, I'm sure he'll bring it up. Y'all, y'all will talk about this in your, just a timeframe on when y'all think this'll-
I don't, Clinton may have that. I was just gonna say, just so we're clear, this is just the form, formalization of the money that you guys approved at the last council meeting, so.
Thank you. The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance, levy and add valorem taxes on all properties subject to taxation by the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the year twenty twenty-two, in providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. First reading.
Some move. Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Williams. End of discussion, counsel? Comment from the public? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of an electrician two, electrician three to a control panel technician and a reclassification of a utility worker, one position, to a foreman, one position in the Public Utilities Department, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading.
Some move. Some move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Maggio. Discussion, was it, was it not Mr. Maggio?
It was.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion.
Wade, you got anything important to say today?
This is from, this is from utilities.
That's not Wade.
Oh, that's not you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that was- I knew you didn't have nothing important to say.
Any, any comments from the public? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Mr. Montgomery, the electrician three position, yea or nay?
Yea.
Thank you. Introduce an ordinance to repair and upgrade the ozone system for Bossier's water treatment facility at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
Some move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Hammond. Is there end of discussion? Any comment from the public?
Actually, Mr. President, just a point of interest for, because he gave me a history lesson on ozone machines and water purifying. So how long, how long does this up, upgrade last? And will it, will it last the, till the estimated completion of nanofiltration studying and possible implementation?
Yes, so what we're primarily upgrading, not primarily, what we're upgrading with the ozone system is the computer equipment. We do have an older ozone system. We take very good care of it. We, 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 through the council, invest quite a bit of money, making sure that that system is fully functional. What we were running into is we're having control boards that are failing, and our ability to get our hands on that equipment is, is fading because they're older. And so working with our IT professionals out at the plant, we, we considered sort of piecemealing this together, but the system is too important to the quality of water in Bossier. And we felt like getting that completely functional, you know, we were talking about IT security and things like this. It's important to have all those firewalls and everything there. So this will completely overhaul all of the electrical components on that system. And it'll last, I mean, it's lasted over a decade, the, the old system that we've had out there. It's just, as y'all know, computer equipment begins to become obsolete, and it's expensive to replace it, so. Would rather not cut corners on that one.
Right.
But that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any additional comment, counsel? And the floor is open for comments from the public. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of an ACO kennel trainer position to a kennel lead animal programs in the Animal Control Division of Public Works, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading.
Some move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery. Any comments? None? Comment from the public?
I think they were turning around, Jeff.
Oh.
David made it.
David made it? Okay. Okay. All right, good, good job, David. All right, let's vote, please.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of an assistant superintendent position to operations and public programs manager, and a promotion of a clerk-tapist to operations and public programs manager in the Animal Control Division of Public Works, and backfill, and backfill any position left vacant due to promotion and resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading.
Move. Second.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery made the motion, second, Mr. Free. End of comment, counsel? The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of city water and sewer to serve the plantation Trace Mobile Home Park development, pending approval of the Louisiana Division of Administration's Water Sector Programming Grant Funding. First reading.
Some move. Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond, second, Mr. Montgomery. Discussion or debate on this item?
So, man, I think we talked about this a little bit last week. So we're gonna run the water to the office there, and then it-
The, the plan is, currently you have two mobile home parks in this location. If you're familiar with our big water tower down on Seventy- you're familiar with our big water tower down on Seventy-One South. You, you have, this is just one of those two parks. They reached out to the city, had some interest in the city consolidating their water and sewer systems into the cities and were familiar with the Water Sector Program Grant, which awards money to water and sewer systems that consolidate with other systems. So it was an interesting kind of timing request by the, by the developer to come to the city for that. We've given it a lot of consideration, the particular project, the water in particular that we applied for in the first round of funding was only short of getting awarded by five points. And so, having the, the consolidation component as part of our application to LDH is advantageous to the city for getting points and we can get up to five million dollars from that program. So we feel like it, it's a mutually beneficial thing for us as well as them in getting a, a very good application in front of the Water Sector Program. So just sort of interesting timing. They came to us, you know, and, and I think it was a blessing, really, 'cause I think it'd be good for the city in, in getting those applications. Consolidation is, that's the word that they use down in Baton Rouge. The LDH and DEQ really want to reduce the number of water and sewer systems they have within the state, so they're providing a lot of grant dollars and infrastructure dollars to making that happen. So there's, there's a lot of good with those Water Sector Program projects that we're working on, but this is, I think, gonna be a valuable piece to getting us some more points.
So Ben, with this, you will be able to resubmit that application, or do you just attach that to what is already there for reconsideration?
We're creating a whole new application, so we're not, we're using what we've provided in round one as a, you know, foundation, and then we're working off of that to augment. There's a lot of things the city's done since that first application. The, the water project in particular is a hundred percent designed, so we have plans and specs, so you get points for project readiness. But the, if you go, if you're involved in any Water Sector Program stuff or any conferences with LDH, you will hear the word consolidation in every other sentence. So it's very important to them and I think that will bode well for the city.
So this will only help us?
Yeah. And if we get it, that will provide money. They'll need infrastructure, water and sewer to service that, that park there and that this grant will provide funds for that. They've agreed to put in a twenty-five percent match to that. City will have to put up at least a twenty-five percent match on top of the five million. So I think it's a, you know, it makes for a more complicated grant to write, but I think at the end, I think it's going to give the city a much better chance at getting those funds. And there wasn't one community in north, maybe one community in northwest Louisiana outside of Shreveport that got money last round, so we'd like to see some up here.
Thank you, man.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments? Public input. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a public information officer. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Hammond, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel?
Charles, do we, where are we getting this money from to pay, is he gonna be working for the police department for you or mayor's office or...?
My understanding, he'll be working for the mayor's office. Ms. Ponder, Officer Ponder and her situation. And so, basically, we're taking the remaining money from her salary and we're transferring it, to the best of my knowledge, to the mayor's office and the, and it will work from the, whoever is hired as the public information officer will work in the mayor's administration.
So whoever they hire now will not have to be post-certified civil service?
That is correct. We're, we're moving a civil service position from the police station and moving that position into the mayor's office, so they will not have to be a post-certified police officer, civil service requirements, things of that nature.
Any additional comments? The floor is open for public comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing city attorney E. Charles Jacobs to hire a part-time police liaison to the city attorney. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Free. Discussion or debate, counsel, on this item?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of questions. So, we transfer twenty-one-nine.
Correct.
For the salary?
Correct.
So now we're gonna trans, now we're gonna pay another fifty-five thousand?
No, but it's not correct. It's the twenty-one-nine funds it through the December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. If we feel the need to come back to the council to extend the employment of Dell Touch, then we'll do it that time. But we are not gonna, that would have to be a, uh, an amendment to the budget at the appropriate time.
Do you think that the resolution should be amended to correspond with that amount?
I have no objection to that at all.
Why don't we...
Why are we passing this now, though? I mean, why can't we wait to see what we're gonna, December, I mean...
Well, assuming that the second reading, the, the twenty-one thousand and, and change passes, then this resolution would allow the immediate hiring of Dell Touch, so he can actually go to work. But the money to pay him through the end of December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-two won't be available until that second reading plus the ten-day advertisement period.
But I don't know, I'm sorry.
No.
I was gonna make...
Yeah, we talked, we talked about what, for five months at twenty-one-nine.
Correct.
So, I guess I don't understand, like I said, it's gonna be probably what, three months off of this one and this twenty-one-nine will be done, but we talked about five months for the same amount. Maybe you can explain that to me, David?
What he's talking about is what is the monthly original salary and the fact there's only gonna be three months left by the time the ordinance for the money. And what I, I think, so, I think what you're saying is what, when is he gonna be hired? So it couldn't happen until August thirtieth. So you'd have September, am I correct?
Correct.
September, October, November, four months. Fifty-five divided by twelve is what, forty-five-hundred a month roughly?
I believe so. Correct.
So we're gonna be pretty close. I don't think we have to spend the money.
Correct.
That's allocated through the ordinance, but roughly his salary's gonna be forty-five-hundred. And, and it ceases on twelve-thirty-one. I was gonna propose also that this resolution, we can, we correct it and put it on for August thirtieth, so that after, if the vote passes for the salary of twenty-one thousand, then we'll pass the resolution so that it all happens at the same time. But it, and I think, and if I'm not answering your question, tell me, but I think what you're saying is why are we appropriating twenty-one thousand? Well, it doesn't mean we gotta spend it because he, he ceases his services twelve-thirty-one. So there may be a little money left over and we can transfer it back to the police department.
Yeah, what I'm saying, though, it was originally five months, right?
Well, it was originally fifty-five thousand for twelve months, am I correct?
I never did see the fifty-five thousand. I never did see the fifty-five. All I thought was, all I, we talked about twenty-one-nine for a certain length of time.
Yeah.
And you was gonna put that on the ordinance, which is not on the ordinance.
Mr. Williams, if I could clarify, I think I can clear it up. The ordinances are, the two readings for the ordinances are just to move the money, the twenty-one thousand. We got the numbers from Ms. Williamson where we were anticipating when this would come before the council. Frankly, the twenty-one thousand is gonna be more than enough to get to the end of the year. That's just twenty-one thousand to fund Mr. Touch's twenty-twenty-two salary. The resolution that you're on now is just the resolution that we bring, just like we did with the, with the, to hire a public information officer or anybody. It's the, it's the normal ordinance. We were just trying to make sure that it was clear that if he, on an annualized basis, the salary's fifty-five thousand. That's just the salary. He'll be paid twenty-one thousand or something for the rest of the year, but it ends at the end of the year. It's just the regular resolution to say hire him and his annual salary would be fifty-five thousand. But certainly not fifty, it's not appropriating fifty-five thousand. That's a resolution. It's just saying to hire him under the resolution that y'all have and his salary would be fifty-five thousand. The rest of the year, that'll be twenty-one, if that makes sense.
Or whatever the exact numbers work out.
Right.
Well, either way, it really doesn't matter, but I would suggest that we continue this resolution to August thirtieth. And if the, if the council sees it fit to change and match the appropriated twenty-one-nine, whatever it is, then we'll change it. But we, I, I would like to make the motion that we continue.
Okay.
This item to August.
I have a motion by Mr. Montgomery to continue item thirteen. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith or Mr. Mr. Williams? So, any other discussion? And the floor is open for someone in the public. Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two account clerks threes due to resignations in the tax department. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion on this item? The floor is open for discussion from someone in the public. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to amend Resolution fifty-five of twenty-twenty-two authorizing the hiring of an office manager in the Public Utilities Department as a result of a retirement and adjusting salaries for the office manager and engineering aide for positions resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Williams. Discussion? Comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it did not go through. There it went.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waivers for the following, Brookshire's and Super One Foods' Heroes Run, October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and Airline High School Homecoming Parade, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Some move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, made and second, Mr. Hammond or Mr. Montgomery?
No.
Does the airline homecom...
I think, he was asking who made the second.
I think I did.
You made the second, yes. Okay, you were going to say, Mr. Montgomery?
Does the route of the homecoming parade still go through the neighborhood?
No.
It doesn't?
Not anymore.
Where is it?
I think it just goes around the, um, goes around the stadium and all, all up through that area.
Just like Bossier, it's, it used to start at the shopping center, go down the bar, step to the bar, turn and go around. Now it just goes around.
I remember the days, like at Bossier High, you know, they'd go all through the neighborhood on Coleman.
And it just goes down Coleman Street.
Yeah.
Back around.
Anyway.
And I was at Airline, it went all through.
I'm just reminiscing, so anyway.
Things change when you get old, don't they?
It does.
Any other discussion?
Becky, I see you back there laughing, too.
Anyone from the public would like to come in on this? Okay, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Board.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city's currently twenty percent over budget. Hotel motel taxes fund revenue is down due to the July occupancy tax being received in August this year. Fire, jail, streets, and capital funds revenue is down due to the July DMB sales tax check from the state being distributed in August this year. Gaming revenue is down five percent compared to prior year. Sales taxes up fourteen percent compared to July twenty-twenty-one. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently seventy-seven percent under budget. Civic center fund expenditures increased for July compared to prior year due to the restroom renovation. Public service and sanitation expenses decreased due to a timing difference in the payment of the garbage collection contract. The alternative fuel stations are over budget, but the revenue is as well at two hundred percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously noted, sales tax revenue is up fourteen percent compared to July twenty-twenty-one. Page four is the manning report. The city has two more employees than last month. The total employees as of month end is seven hundred and five, which is forty-one employees below the budgeted total. Oh, that's a typo, I'm sorry. The employees are six hundred and sixty-four. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for July twenty-twenty-two has increased significantly compared to July twenty-twenty-one. Current year-to-date income has increased a hundred and sixty-one percent over prior year and is thirty-nine percent under budget. On a rolling twelve-months basis, current net operating income is up thirty-seven percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you.
Engineering Department, Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
I've run through our monthly update. Still, we got a hundred and two million dollars ongoing, went up about one point two million from last year, ninety-six of that's under construction. We moved about four projects from the designer bid phase into construction for around twelve and still eleven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. Carriageway Phase Two, they are now thirty-one days ahead of schedule. They are blowing and going out there, doing really good, taking advantage of all the dry weather. We had somebody go take some aerial photographs of the project. As it's coming on, we'll be doing this throughout the duration of the project. This right here is one of the roundabouts being constructed. And then this right here is the end of Phase One. You can see as they go all the way up through Phase Two. We will be working with IT to get a lot of the photos and videos that we took uploaded to the city's website, hopefully later this week, so people can go and take a look at it. Carriageway Pump Station, this is substantially complete. You saw the day. We had the closeout, closeout change order. We'll get that project marked off. East Bank Fire Station, they're now set about eight days ahead of schedule. We'll be wrapping that one up. Interior finishes, getting ready to move forward. Currently working on getting some preliminary punch lists going. LTRI, they are twenty-seven days ahead currently. They're working with Louisiana Tech, trying to get all the interior finishes done, working closely with Adam McGirt over there, as well as facility planning control to get this project wrapped up. Highway seventy-one lighting improvements, this one is ongoing. We're just waiting on stockpiling materials to get them in. Once we get those in, they'll be starting to do foundations, lake conduit, stuff like that. Until that time, though, we'll just let them hold for now. Bossier Arts Council improvements, NTP has been issued. Again, waiting on a lot of the materials to come in, so we can get started on it. lot of the materials to come in, so we can get started on it. Private development, still blowing and going, taking care, taking advantage of the dry weather. We've got, I believe, the private oaks down there on the bottom and I believe up top is Duckwater Landing. Some of our projects entering the, are out for bid. One big one that changed was the full-load drainage improvements. We took bids on that Friday, issuing contracts this week and hopefully get some pipe ordered and we'll be seeing some dirt toned, turned over down there. Still working on Bardot Lane, Montgomery Drainage Improvements, reviewing the preliminary plans with the designer. Should have a set of plans on the citywide street improvements in two weeks. We got those by ninety percent complete, trying to coordinate with the levy board on some potential drainage structures in the, in those areas. And still waiting on some roadway acquisition on Elm Grove. That should be nearing soon. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Announcements. Mr. Mayor, good to see you.
It's good to see you, too, Mr. Darby.
Any comments today?
Sir?
Any comments today?
No, sir, I just, I think we had a great council meeting and I hope everybody has a great evening.
All right.